Everybody, I'd like to call to order the Planning Board meeting for October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. My name's Carrie Marneck. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started here, I'm going to read a couple of announcements. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, the town of Northborough has been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Planning Board to be entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberation of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube. We have the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Millie Milton?
Here.
Michelle Gillespie?
Here.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
And Amy Profsky?
Yeah.
Okay, and then staff, when I call your name, please reply in the affirmative. Looks like Kathy Jubert?
Here.
Okay, great. For presenters and/or applicants listed on the agenda, the chair will invite each speaker applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the board or committee will be conducted by roll call vote. After members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. By phone dial star nine to raise your hand in ways to be recognized by the chair, please note the party phone number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, the chair will call each one by name and afford approximately three minutes for any comments. With that, why don't we get started with tonight's agenda? First on our agenda, we have Ashley Davies presenting OSC CPC application. Oops, bring Ashley in. Do we have her here? Oh, hi, Ashley.
Hi, how is everyone?
Good, thanks.
Ashley.
Do you need to share a screen or anything, or do you have the ability to share a screen if you need to?
You know, I don't think I'm going to need to today. I had hoped to have some visuals, but not quite there yet with the map.
Okay, no problem. All right, so why don't you present what you had, and then we'll open up a discussion.
Sure, so I'm here tonight. So Ashley Davies from the Open Space Committee. I'm here tonight to ask for a letter of support for our CPC application that the Open Space Committee is hoping to submit to fund a feasibility study for a multi-use trail. The idea for this trail started with the town of Westboro. They've been working for a number of years on putting together a trail in their town and just completed a feasibility study there that they're kind of working out the kinks of. And they're just beginning to negotiate easements. And the folks over there had looked at the Northborough Trails as well, as they've been working on the the Burrows Trail project and kind of had this idea and came to us with some information, a lot of information actually already kind of laid out. And when we saw this information, we realized that it fits really nicely with a few of the master planning goals from the recent master plan, including looking for opportunities for sidewalks and pedestrian orientation projects, which this would be. So, and it also meets some of the goals of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. So the idea for this project is at this stage, just obtaining a feasibility study, but the overall goal for the multi-use trail would be to create a a six-mile trail that comes from Westboro all the way up to Berlin and connects with the trail that the town of Westboro will be working on, as well as the trail that the town of Berlin would be working on, and Berlin's is about a one-mile section that would connect this up to the Mass Central Rail Trail, which is the subject of some funding at the state level. So, this, the six-mile area that is kind of the focus of this does provide a number of connections from Lake Chauncey, Algonquin, the Senior Center, Memorial Field, and some of the downtown businesses. So it would be sort of like a rail trail and would allow folks in Northborough to really to access a number of areas by foot, by bike, and other and other modes of transportation that are not vehicles. So I feel like this, with sidewalks being a really tricky thing for the town to take on, maybe this could be a way to bring these, you know, sort of a pedestrian project to town without having to go about creating sidewalks throughout town. And there is one other piece, and so when we were discussing this project in the Open Space Committee, there was another piece, which is about a one-mile section that goes from Westboro over to Shrewsbury, which kind of just allows people from Northborough Crossing to connect up with potentially at some future point, or Route Nine, to access the commuter rail. And so when we were discussing getting a feasibility study on this six-mile section, everyone said, well, why not, you know, also get a feasibility study on this one-mile section as well and see if, you know, that's at all doable? And if we're going to do it, you know, do all of it. So at this stage, we're just kind of determining whether this is something that the town could or would like to take on. And this feasibility study would look at, it would look at the mapping that's already been done by the folks in Westboro and really hone in on it, make sure it's accurate, determine all of the landowners that we'd need to work with in order to make this possible. What wetlands areas there might be, what rare habitat areas there might be, grading issues, things like that. Just to see what's doable, you know, road crossings, what would have to happen there? Is this even possible? It wouldn't at this point get into overall costs, although I think, so I got an estimate from Waterman Design Associates on cost, and they estimated eighty-five thousand for the total cost for the study. And at this point, their estimate doesn't include determining the cost, so I think that might be a further stage in terms of design of the trail and then getting the cost, but we could always put out a request for proposals that included, you know, the firm, whatever firm's providing us with costs. Not sure exactly, maybe Kathy knows more about that than I do. You know, whether you can ask for that level at this stage in the game with the feasibility study. But right now, we're asking for, I think, just to be safe, a hundred thousand dollars for a feasibility study. If Waterman estimates eighty-five thousand, you know, some other companies may estimate more. Waterman is a good choice because they did the Westboro feasibility study and are familiar with this trail. They've also been working with the Trails Committee on Aqueduct Bridge and some other things in town. So they may be, but, you know, obviously, we'd put out a proposal to see who was out there. But I think it is important to note that the Trails Committee is putting forth two CPC applications for trail work. One being the Aqueduct Bridge work. And this would, the Aqueduct Bridge would be a portion of this six-mile multi-use trail. Obviously, Aqueduct Bridge would happen sooner, and this may be something that could complement that and add to it later down the road once we kind of get to that stage. So I think that's really it for now, as I did submit to you a draft application, and I do want to make some edits to that, create a better map. And in the application, I did say we could apply for a Mass Trails grant in February, but I think Trails Committee does have two applications they'd like to submit to Mass Trail. So this would probably be just solely CPC funds, so we would allow Trails Committee to go for those and not kind of interrupt their process. And I think the one last thing to mention, and then blanking, just that, that, you know, right now, there is a lot of funding for pedestrian orientation projects like this. And so that's why we feel like it would be a good time to kind of get this ball rolling, as well as the fact that it is, you know, it does meet a master planning goal, and we'd like to really try to move those forward. So that's all I have for now.
Okay, great. Any comments or question from, excuse me, comments or questions from board members?
Um, Ashley, I don't know if it's in the body of it, but does it talk about how long the feasibility study would take once it started?
Yes, I did get that information from Waterman today, and I think it was around nine months, so let me just like.
No, it's in here somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah, five to seven months to complete. Barring any snow cover getting in the way of their.
To me, it sounds like a great project, like it does fit a lot of the criteria in the master plan. I think it's really exciting. I think a lot of towns benefit from a rail trail. And I think the residents would be really excited.
Just a quick question for me. You mentioned that the trails had two different proposals out. One was the Aqueduct Bridge, and what was the second one they have out?
They do have a loop trail that they're working on at the Senior Center, which this could connect to, but the loop trail is sort of its own, its own ADA accessible loop.
So what you're proposing is not necessarily taking away from any of those, it's just a supplement that could work in conjunction with our.
Yeah, so their projects are in the near term, and they would probably happen in the next few years, I would assume. And I think the bridge will take some time, which is why I'm saying a few years, even though they're, you know, kind of getting started already. This project would be for a feasibility study, obviously, we would be getting started in the summer, we'd probably put out for bids after town meeting. And then, once we had the feasibility study, you know, within six months or so, we could start looking at negotiating easements and seeing whether we could really make this happen. And if it seems like a real possibility, I think from there, a project like this probably estimated to take about five to ten years. So it is something that takes a long time. It does cost a lot of money. Something like this can cost a million dollars a mile if you're doing the paves, like a rail trail. A lot of this project is on the Aqueduct, so there is discussion that has to be had with MWRA, whether, you know, something short of paving could work and that may make it a less expensive project. I did talk to Westboro today, and they have a short section, and they said their estimate was something like twenty-four thousand dollars for their section, which is very low. And I don't think it took into consideration some of the wetlands issues and permitting and things like that. So they're still working out their numbers there, but with a paved, like, rail trail, a million dollars a mile, but something like this, I think, would be different. We're looking for it to be able to be used by a number of, you know, we'd like it to be ADA accessible and, you know, used by bikers and hikers, but hoping for something less than paved and what a full rail trail might cost.
And have you presented at other boards or committees or have feedback that you've heard, whether pros or cons or anything?
Yeah, thus far, I presented at Trails Committee last night, and they were very enthusiastic. Obviously, they want, you know, see the feasibility study and see if this is possible. It sounds like, you know, why not? No-brainer. Let's see if we can make this happen, because if we could, it'd be a great project. So they are going to provide a letter of support. We did speak with DPW Director, and he kind of was like, yeah, let's see what happens, you know, not positive, not negative. And Mia is sort of the same, you know, nothing against, so, you know, let's explore our options.
Okay. Any other board questions, or Kathy, any questions from you?
No, I don't, I don't have any questions. I just, you know, Ashley and I both were at the Trails Committee last night, and I just want to give you a little bit of, maybe just a little bit more information on the Trails Committee's applications. Those, it's not, it's, as Ashley said, the Trails Committee is going to, you know, put it, you know, provide a letter of support for the application. And it's not, I think, one of the reasons why they're not, a couple of reasons why they're not doing this or promoting this just yet is because they've been working on these other two applications, these are the two projects for a few years now. And the accessible trail, it's a loop trail around the Senior Center or on the Senior Center property. And we had, as a town, we've applied, we've applied for two other grants or two, two grant programs, and we were not awarded either one of those grants. And so now we're before the Trails Committee, before the CPC. And that is for the design work for that trail. And then their second application, which, which has long, which has long been a dream of so many people for so many years in this community, which is actually using the Aqueduct. And as Ashley had mentioned, you know, part of, or most of the bigger project that she's looking at, you know, would utilize the Aqueduct Bridge. And so the Trails Committee is submitting a grant, excuse me, CPC application to do the, the design work on that also. A feasibility study has already been done on the bridge, structural analysis has already been done on the bridge. There's a question about, right now, it's owned by the, you know, Massachusetts Water Resource Authority. So it's a question of who, who would end up owning the bridge. We would like to see that it stays with the MWRA. We already have our eight M permit. You're all familiar with the eight M permit. So we already, as a community, we already have our eight M permit to cross the Aqueduct. The state has given us permission to do that. So those are the, those are the first two, or the two priorities of the Trails Committee as far as getting funding. And as Ashley said, you know, this project is looked at, you know, law, I mean, the Aqueduct, crossing the Aqueduct is going to be, you know, that's not going to be done in just one application either. That's, that's going to run into a lot of, of, you know, construction costs and burying of underground, I mean, putting wires underground and so forth. So these are not, you know, the Senior Center Loop is cheap compared to the two projects that Ashley and I are working on. And, or that the Trails Committee and the Open Space Committee are working on. So, so we don't, you know, there's always a concern, we, you know, we don't want these applications to compete with each other, but they're really all at different stages. And, and then, you know, will, if they all are funded by the CPC, then, you know, we really will want to internally coordinate, you know, how we go after additional grant funding, so that we're not putting two town projects against each other for, for outside grant funding.
Any other board questions or comments?
I'm here. So is there any, are you leveraging any of the existing trails in town, or is this all new trails?
It does leverage existing trails as well as the Aqueduct for a large portion. So it, it's mostly Aqueduct and then some other connections, and then it connects up with, you know, Edmund Hill Woods and a few other properties. It's not going to take away, you know, ruin any of our existing trails. I guess it's kind of what I want to say, like, we wouldn't, those are kind of off into the woods, they have their own situation. This is kind of really going to be a lot in the Aqueduct, which I think why, is why the discussions with the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority is, you know, those discussions are going to be really crucial to determine if this is, if this is really possible.
Would there be any street sections where there's a, going along a road?
There are a few small sections around, along roads. There is a potential railroad crossing that we could avoid. There are a couple of road crossings.
And in turn, you talked about Edmund's Hill, which is, there's some technical portions of that. Would you be just leaving them as they are? You wouldn't be smoothing them out or widening them or anything like that?
That's the intent at this point, yeah, not, not getting into the conservation areas. So I think that's what Westboro at this point is trying to figure out, because theirs, I think, goes through some conservation areas and some sensitive areas, and they, they're trying to figure out how to get around those. So we would want to make sure at the outset, we're avoiding any sensitive habitat and, and conservation areas. So we can kind of make this a different type of, a different type of trail that, you know, doesn't impact those areas, but provides this pedestrian access.
All right.
And I do need to do more, more work on the mapping, because, you know, as I noted, the town of Westboro folks had done mapping, but, you know, we have to do our own, and obviously, that's, this feasibility study would really look into that and look at options and alternatives as well, so.
Great.
Okay. Michelle, anything from you?
Um, yeah, I had already voiced my concerns at the Open Space Meeting. Well, I think it's a good project. I don't think it's a good project for the share for town meeting, so I would not be voting in favor of it. I think we've got plenty of two major projects for the Senior Center and the Aqueduct, which is going to be quite extensive, expensive on the Aqueduct, so I'd much rather see resources go to that. I'm like, I know that the Aqueduct is a long-term project as well as this one, but I think at this point in time, I really feel like following what the Trails Committee is doing, which is putting their efforts into the Senior Center and the Aqueduct is probably more important than looking at this, but certainly the master plan could probably put it on their list and look at it next year or the following year. But at this point, I think the energy from the town should go to the Aqueduct, so I'm not in favor of it. For this year, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay. I just wanted to add, I watched the conservation meeting last night. So the CPC money going towards the loop, I think Mia said was going to be twenty-eight thousand five hundred for that design. And the Aqueduct crossing design, she said it would be seventy-five to a hundred thousand. So I'm not sure, Kathy, if there are any other CPC applications, but it seems like the feasibility study for this could fit along with those.
Yeah, can I comment?
And the Aqueduct might be able to merge in with the trail, you know, it might come forth as all one project.
Ashley, did you have something?
Yeah, just in terms of timing, I know I mentioned that a project like this can take, you know, you know, a decade to really come to completion, and I think with it being a priority of the master plan or really fitting in with the priority of the master plan, we just felt like it was a good time now to get the ball rolling. And like I said, there is a lot of funding available, starting this year because of COVID and ARPA funding. I don't know what ARPA stands for, American Recovery Act, something like that. Which is, which is why we felt like this timing, this was good timing. But I did want to mention too, that the Trails Committee, we had been under the impression that the Trails, that the town of Westboro had brought this to the Trails Committee, and that the Trails Committee felt like they didn't have the capacity to take it on, which is why they had said no. And the fact of the matter I learned last night was that they had been brought the presentation about the one-mile piece from Westboro to Shrewsbury near Northborough Crossing, but they hadn't ever seen this other six-mile piece that had been mapped out. And when they did see it, they were very excited about it and the fact that it could dovetail nicely with the work on the Aqueduct Bridge. So I just wanted to mention that and that, you know, they hadn't turned down this project, had never seen it, even though we thought they had, so.
Millie, you're on CPC. Do you know, I guess you haven't, applications aren't due until a little, until November, so I don't,
Right.
So you don't really have insight into.
There's other applications.
Okay.
Of hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Okay. Okay, good to know. Okay, so any other comments or questions from board members?
So Ashley, you're.
So Ashley, you, you said you're going to do some more work on the mapping because I'm, I just had some questions on the mapping, but I, I don't want to ask them if you're going to be putting more details in.
Yeah, I, I, I'm probably not the best person to ask about the mapping. So what I provided was what the town of Westboro, the folks on the Trails Committee over there had provided to us, and I find them difficult to follow, which is why I'm going to be, um, I'm going to be hiking all of those areas and creating more detailed and, um, more understandable maps, so.
Okay. Uh, one quick question I do have is that this proposed trail would end in going, as we going into Berlin, is that correct? Does Berlin have a connector? I can't remember if you said something about that.
They don't at this point. Um, they have been discussing it, but they haven't had really any serious movement on that at this point. And they have a couple of big conservation projects that they're working on right now. Um, so.
Okay, so it would be, it would be effec- effectively a, a turnaround where it ends on our, on our part.
Yeah, with the hope that, you know, Berlin joins and, and allows us to connect up with the Master, right, Central Rail Trail.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so Ashley, your question, your original point of presenting is you were looking for the planning board to write a letter of endorsement.
Yes.
Okay, so in terms of Michelle, it's, you're, you're not in favor. How are other board members feeling about this? Amy, it sounds like.
I'm in favor.
Millie, or what are you thinking?
Yeah, I'd like to see it go through, just to see, I mean, uh, I'll get a chance to see it again in CPC. But, um, I don't, I, I don't, I think it would be a neat thing if we could just begin to look at this.
Uh, Anthony, thoughts from you?
Uh, definitely support it. And I think it's such a long-term project that it, and it's going to be little steps along the way. I'd like to see it get going, um, because if it's going to take five to 10 years, it's a good starting point.
I also think, you know, different grants come down the line for different things. So say there's bike trail grants next year, but there aren't like for the, I know that Kathy said they applied twice for the accessible around the senior center. If there's nothing available for that, but there's bike trail and rail trail grants, then you'd want to have the feasibility study so you can jump on it. Just like the Aqueduct, they already have their feasibility study.
Okay, so it sounds like a majority of the board is in favor of endorsement. Um, Kathy, do we need a vote for that?
Yeah, I would suggest just, you know, I mean, where you're taking official action that, you know, you as a planning board want, you know, uh, want to put in a letter of recommendation, uh, you know, with the application that, that Ashley will be doing for the Open Space Committee. So I, yeah, I would suggest you take a vote and either, you know, you can write it, I can write it, Carrie, whatever you want.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to write a letter of recommendation to support the CPC application for open space?
No move.
A second? Okay, all in favor, Anthony?
Hi.
Millie?
I.
Amy?
I.
Michelle?
No.
And Carrie's an I. Okay, so either way, um, Ashley, thank you so much for bringing this forward and presenting it and doing work on it. It, it looks like, it sounds like it's been a, a hope of many, so thank you.
Thanks for your support and I'll be providing you guys with better maps when I get them.
Yes, Millie's looking forward to walking them right away.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Well, thanks for joining. And what, what, you need this letter by?
Um, the applications are due November fourth, uh, but I did, uh, John Campbell did let me know that, you know, if the letter came in later, that might be okay, so.
Okay, so Kathy, I can always help with that if you have a busy week or we can figure it out.
Yeah, no, I mean, I can, I can put something together and, and send it to you, Carrie.
Okay. Okay, all right, great. Thanks so much, Ashley.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Okay, um, so it looks like, um, Damon Amato is not presenting this evening, evening on Seventy-Five Ridge Road, so that's still the case Kathy, they're not ready yet.
Yes, that, that's correct. Oh, am I muted still?
Nope, I heard you, yep.
Okay.
All right, so before we go back to bylaws, I just want to at least get through anything else on the agenda we want to cover and we can kind of leave that last. Um, it looks like minutes, I'm not sure everyone got a chance. I personally did not get a chance to review. I don't know if everyone else is ready for.
You actually don't, you, yeah, you actually don't have, um, that might have just been an older set, Carrie. Melanie did do your last set, but I need to fill in a couple of spots and, um, uh, with just some, you know, uh, some details that, um, Melanie asked me to take a look at. I just haven't gotten a chance to do that, so we'll have those for the next meeting. Um, I have an A and R, Carrie, if you want to look at that.
Sure, go, sure, go ahead.
I mean, I, okay.
So Carrie, I'll recuse myself for this since I'm, I'm associated with this A and R.
Okay, sure.
You can make a note of that.
Yes, um, Melanie, for the minutes, if you could note that Michelle recused herself from this A and R.
Okay, of course. I hang on one second. Once again, I thought I had it lined up to, um, Okay, can people see that?
Yes.
Okay, so let me just go in a little bit more. This, so this is an A and R for, uh, Lincoln Street. That might be too much, but, um, this is, o- over here is the, um, um, but it's a fifty-five and older, uh, development, the name excuses me right now, but, um, but the Tony Abu built. Um, up here is, um, the middle school.
Yep.
And, uh, just do this a little bit. That might be too small, but, um, anyways, it's a, a piece of property, um, you've seen the, you know, there's, there's been a lot of at least activity in our office, people interested in this, uh, in this parcel, but you have, um, what they're proposing, what the engineer here is proposing, uh, is two lots. Here's the lot line that, that they want to create. So there's, um, this particular lot and then this particular lot. They meet, you know, I mean, ba- basically all the A and R is, is that it meets, you know, frontage and, um, area. And, you know, both of them do, um, they have, uh, the proper amount of frontage and they both have, um, more than enough acreage. So there, and then, you know, obviously it's in the residential C, um, district and also in the residential B district. And the, um, um, the, uh, residential B is more restrictive than residential C, so the residential B dimensions have to be met. So that's why each one of the lots has, um, uh, either a hundred, it has to be a minimum of a hundred and fifty feet of frontage and it has that. And then each lot has to have at least forty thousand square feet. And again, they have more than that. Each one of the lots has more than that. Um, so then, you know, obviously the next step, someone would either be looking at, um, uh, you know, two single-family houses here, or if somebody wanted to go through the special permit process and do duplexes. Um, there was originally, uh, a, a gentleman, um, that came and went all the way through with the Design Review Committee. Um, and the Design Review Committee, um, you know, approved the, um, the two designs uh, that he, um, had. Uh, so he finished out the process with the Design Review Committee. Um, and then, a- and then he chose, I guess, not to pursue it. So they're back on the market and that's it. It's, it's, it's two lots.
So is the current owner dividing them?
Yes. It's the current owner, the, um, the, I think it's a, it's a, they're often realty trusts. Um, this is, the applicant is June Roman. Um, and the owner of the pro, she's a trustee. And the property is in the Warren Oberg nineteen eighty-eight family trust.
Go ahead, Amy.
Um, Kathy, you mentioned duplexes, but you mentioned they have to follow RB and, um, two family dwellings aren't allowed in RB, so they'd have to go for variance?
Uh, yes, if they were gonna, if they were gonna pursue it. Um, or if they, um, you know, if there was a way they can, could configure it so that the majority of the lot was in the RC district, you know, somebody could do that and go for, and do that with a special permit.
Where, where's the divider between RC and RB on this?
Right here.
Oh, I see, okay.
So again, you know, I, I have no idea what someone will do. I'm, I'm just letting you know what, you know, I mean, it's in a residential neighborhood, you know, it's going to be residential.
Yeah, yeah. My question was just because you said special permit, but then I looked it up and it says they're not allowed by special permit. So that was my question.
Yeah, so in the, in the RC, yeah, sorry about that, Amy, but in the RC district, um, they, they would be allowed. Um, if, if someone, um, wanted to, uh, keep the, um, the buildings, yeah, you know, in the RC, uh, district, you know, they, they can do that. Um, or if they were, uh, you know, I mean, as you see, this is all, this is the wetland line. Um, so this is basically all a no build, so, um, I think that you will, a- again, I, that, we don't have any house plans or anything, but, um, I believe that you will see the houses down here in the RC district.
Okay.
And then if you, if, say they, I know that this is just hypothetical, I suppose, but if, if they were to get a variance, do they still need a permit, a special permit from the planning board?
Um, well, they would only need a variance, Carrie, if, if the houses were going to be placed up in here. And, and there's, there's just no, um, there's just no way under our wetlands regulations that, that, I mean, there would be a house anywhere here. The only uplands you have is right, whoops, is right here and right here. Um, and then on this lot, so this is where they, they're proposing the lot line. On this lot, um, the only way to get here is to snake up, you know, the, the, the side here, which, which someone could do. But, so I would, I would anticipate, I mean, just knowing the property, knowing, you know, that, that, uh, you know, um, that the original person, that, I mean, again, he's no longer in the picture, but, you know, his houses were, his duplexes that he was proposing. Um, it never reached the planning board, but they were in the RC portion of the property.
Okay, but in the event of a variance, would they then need a special permit for the duplexes?
No, he, it's like the variant, we've asked town council about that before. It's like the variance, you know, trumps the special permit. Because if, you know, he's, if, if someone were to, and I keep saying he, um, if they were, were to, if someone were to build in the RB and wanted a duplex, they would be going for a variance there. So they, they wouldn't even need a special permit. Um, the special permit is just if they build down here in the residential C district. But if they built up here in the residential B district and wanted duplexes.
Although I think for the duplexes, we have no use variances are allowed. I can't remember. Didn't hear that for the, doesn't matter.
Either, either way, no houses are coming back here.
No, I'm just curious, just curious.
Okay. Thirty thousand square feet in the front? I'm just curious. I don't know if you even know.
Uh, no, I don't know. I, I don't know based on this.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
So we'll have that, now I, um, Carrie, I, um, I know you're traveling, so, um, if you want to have someone else come in to sign it.
What, what does it do?
Um, they, this came in last week in, um, so we have the, the, you know, the twenty-one days, but I mean, any one of the planning board members can sign it.
Okay, um, if it needs to be this week, I could only do Friday, so I'll let, if, if that, if someone else wants to sign it, then that's earlier, that's okay. Maybe we, well, why don't we first take a vote? And get that squared away and then we can figure out signature. So is there a motion to approve the A and R for ninety-five, ninety-seven Lincoln Street?
I make a motion to approve the A and R for ninety-five, ninety-seven Lincoln Street.
Second? Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Millie?
I.
Amy?
I.
Anthony?
Hi.
And Carrie's an I. Okay, in term, and Michelle has recused herself, so there's, um, that's, that's the vote there. Um, for signatures, is that, does anybody want to go in this week to sign for the A and R? Or else I can do it for today.
I mean, I can go in. What time, what time is the town hall open till, Kathy?
The, um, on tomorrow and Thursday, um, technically till four. Um, I can always, um, well, actually tomorrow I can't stay later, Thursday I could. Um, Millie, if that was helpful, um, to you or anyone else. And then Friday, we're here seven to noon.
Okay, I will try to get in probably Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we'll have it on the counter, Millie, but I mean, one of us will, you know, certainly be here, so.
Okay.
Alrighty, let's see. Okay, any, um, subcommittee updates?
The master plan is meeting this week. We're meeting Thursday night. And then I think maybe later in our meeting, where we're going to go down the list of the recommendations, I think Kathy sent out today. She highlighted all the areas where the planning board fell into recommendations. And, and if you want to do it as a committee, we can just go down those. Um, what they wanted for this week is to check off any that we've done or look at any that could be done, like, easily, you know, anything that the planning board is taking on or could take on in the near future.
Okay. All right, any, um, so we, let's get back to that one. Any, does anyone else have any other? I was just trying to look up the, um, quarterly meeting for CEMR PC.
Yeah, that, that's coming up, Carrie, um, uh, November, oh, um, November's, wait a minute, let me, I, I'll find the date. I sent a, um, I, I sent out that, um, the notice about that today. And, um, let's just see. While, um, while I'm looking at that, I'll, I'll try to talk and do this at the same time. Because, um, Millie probably has not seen her email because I just sent it out as a, um, save the date just before this meeting. Um, but the, um, uh, CPC will be meeting on December second. Uh, that will be the, the first meeting um, of, of the season for them.
Okay, so I found the, um, CMR PC, so that's. Yep.
What's the date?
Wednesday, November tenth, and it is for the first in a series of visioning sessions for the comprehensive regional plan. Imagine twenty-fifty, a vision for central Massachusetts. So that's coming up for anyone interested.
So I, I actually, Carrie, um, what do you want me to, it's, it's central mass information. Um, a couple of things I just wanted to, to point out to the planning board. Um, so just, um, the, and again, I think I had forwarded this to everybody if you wanted to see the details of it, but the, um, you know, once a year, the Regional Planning Commission sends out the local planning assistant hours that, uh, you know, each community has. Um, so that listing came out, um, a few days ago. And, uh, we're at eighteen hours. Um, usually it's a standard twelve hours and then you, um, each community can earn extra when, anytime anyone goes to a meeting. Um, uh, you know, board members, um, and or staff, um, attend a meeting or training or, you know, some sort of workshop that the Regional Planning Commission has put on. So, uh, so that's, that's just to give everybody, you know, just an overview, that's, that we have eighteen hours, um, in our, sort of in our folder, um, right now. And then I also wanted to, um, point out or remind everybody, I don't know if people were on the selectmen's meeting last night or not, but October twenty-eighth, uh, next week is when we will be conducting, um, the, uh, walking audit of, on Bartlett Street. Um, that was part of- Of on Bartlett Street, um, that was part of the post occupancy, um, monitoring report. We had talked about as a community, um, and and actually that was, um. Sort of formulated out of when Central Mass came to the planning board, um, several months ago and. Sue Jaffa, one of the staff members, you know, made a presentation to you about, um, uh, traffic, sort of in in general, traffic. Issues and concerns. So the, um, what we originally were calling a neighborhood, um, walk audit. Is now officially being called a road safety audit, and that, like I said, will be taking place October twenty eighth. Um, there's been an agenda posted on it that will run from nine to noon. And, um, there are, uh, you know, a, um, a, a list of stakeholders that we had put together. Um, weeks ago with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, um, so there'll be staff and there'll be, um. Uh, residents, uh, participating in this. First, we'll meet at the high school, uh, do some work, do some initial upfront work. With, uh, planners from the Regional Planning Commission, then we will go out for about an hour, um, as a group and make our observations. On Bartlett Street, and then we will go back to the high school for a conclusion for about another hour. So, um, anybody is invited to attend, but with the boards, um, the, you know. You can't run into a violation of the open meeting law. So, um, you know, if anybody did wanna participate, it really, you know, should only be. One of you, two at the max, but I I I wouldn't even recommend two. I mean, if. You know, I mean, you may not even, you know, be, not not that you're not interested in this, but I mean, it's, you know, there's, there's a whole. Life around this and there's people participating in this and it's, and it's, the the focus is really on, um, you know, getting. Neighborhood, um, you know, getting residents to participate in this. You know, it's not so much that it's a board exercise, it's, it's a resident exercise.
Are there any board members that happen to be interested?
I can do it. I think, unless anyone else, unless Carrie you're around, or Millie, or somebody wants it.
I don't think I can get away for that long.
Alright, so it doesn't sound like, I knew, if you wanted to do it, it doesn't sound like you'd be in competing for anyone under OML or anything, so.
Right. Okay, and I do think as long as we don't deliberate, I mean, if two people came. It shouldn't be a big deal.
Right, but it's just that, we're just letting all the boards know, it's, you know, it's the appearance and it's also, um, it's also the, um. The, you know, when, sometimes when board members, um, participate. When, when we want general participation, like sometimes people don't fully participate. If if board members are there, and I'm, and I'm not saying, you know, don't come, but it's, you know, it it people just. Um, sometimes people are just more open when they're, when they're. When they, you know, believe and interpret that it's their exercise that they're doing and not, not a, you know, coming from boards. I don't know if you, if I explained that. Um, well enough, but, um, but what, again, what we're trying to do is generate participation from the neighborhood.
Alright, well, it sounds like Amy, you're the only one interested anyway, so i- if you wanna attend and put on your resident hat and. Do it that way.
And I sent everybody a link, you know, to that today. Um, so if you, um, and and I did not anticipate that anyone would, you know, look at that information. There's some prompts in there as far as, you know, things to think about, um, before you come to the meeting so that you're a little prepared, um, you know, better prepared for the discussion.
Okay.
So those were the two, um, Carrie, that I just wanted to touch base on with Central Mass.
Okay, great. Let's see, so then why don't we, and if no other updates there, then why don't we get back to the, um, master plan list there? Amy, is that something? Do you wanna leave this part of the discussion?
Sure, I could try to share screen. Let me see.
I've got it, Amy, if you want.
Okay, either way.
Oh, we all hate this scrolling part, but it's gonna be scrolling if you wanna go through every page. Um, but go ahead, that's the, that's the first page, Amy.
Yes.
Or if you want me to just go over.
No, I can, I read through them today and stuff, so I had some ideas. Um, we could go through them. I don't know if anybody else has had time to reread the master plan recommendations.
Not in a while, so.
The first three, though, I did see as more of, uh, open space, although we aren't involved too, so I thought maybe. At some point, maybe we have a joint meeting with open space, if it's planning board in open space. The priorities are conduct the cost of community services, build off of the four ninety five Metro West Development. And review the existing zoning bylaws and conservation commission regulations for needed revisions. But I think it would be good to get open space input on those. It was Ashley who had brought. Um, conduct the cost of community services study to the master plan originally, and so I actually asked her about it. And she thought it could be an open space, um. Something that they could do, take on. So really, for the first three, I do think we could be a part of it. But it may fall more on open space.
So just to back up for a second, um, the exercise is to look at what we've either already, already done. Or what can be done in the short term, or.
Right.
Like, in terms of like prioritizing, or just, um, just a discuss, general discussion?
Just kind of a general discussion about what falls under our categories, and is there anybody here that thinks? You know, conduct a cost of community services study, um, I heard that that's not. Super time consuming, so that might be something I thought maybe we could do, but it also is something that open space could do.
You know, and i- if I can just interject a little too, it it, you know, some of these things. Um, were, I mean, all of these were, were obviously, you know, very much discussed. At the steering, master plan steering committee level, um, but like just as an example, and not to pick on this, but it's the very first one. Um, you know, the, sure, there's, there's a lot of value in in doing a community services study. But you also need to look at, you know, need to put it in context, and, um, this community, um, to to date. And, you know, and I'm going back years here, has been very supportive of open space protection and open space acquisition. And, um, you know, to the point where, you know, you have your open space committee, you have your community preservation committee. Uh, you, um, at just about every year, you know, the voters at town meeting support, um, um. Uh, uh, you know, a a warrant article for the funding of open space and that, you know. Funding goes into the conservation fund, and then, um, the conservation commission and the open space committee, you know, work. Um, together to look at, you know, parcels to purchase. So, so at this point, you know, sort of in the, um. Uh, a- at this stage in the community, you know, that it sort of would be a waste of money to do that because you don't, you don't. At this point, there's, you don't need to prove that to anybody, you know, the community.
Yeah, so there, I thought this was more about, and not, not that it's not about what you're saying, but also this, the other side of this was like. When we're, when the planning board, and why I thought we were on this, is when we're looking at applications and we're talking about the economic value of whatever is. Proposed to move into that spot, that there's also competing or complimentary information about what's the value of that open space? Or what's the opportunity cost of taking up that open space? I thought it was to give us a picture, to assign a value to open space when we're looking at. Applications, uh, if, does that sound familiar to anybody? I thought that at one point, that was the pitch for that.
That's what I thought it was too.
I mean, un- unless the land is for sale, you know, to, uh, uh, unless it's being offered to the town. Um, you know, it's kind of a mo- exercise, but.
But sometimes they are like, say, four twenty nine came up. For sale and it could have been, you know, we could have voted as a board that we wanted to look into keeping it, or do we wanna sell it? So, just to have that.
I mean, and you, you know, you made that decision, but I mean, again, I don't wanna belabor it, you, you know, you don't wanna be here until ten o'clock tonight talking about. Things that are already in the open space, they've already been decided. These are already recommendations in the open space. I'm just talking about, you know, in general. That, you know, it, there's, there's just, like, you know, let's always just look at the bigger picture of, of, you know, and and also, you know, what's, what's. More important, and that's not, I don't think that's what your exercise was tonight. Um, I'm not really clear myself on what the exercise is tonight, but.
Just if there's anything we could check off, that we could do. I didn't know e- exactly how hard it was to do a cost of community services, so I was just looking into it. But I just have a question on the second one, L one, LU one dash two. Um, Kathy, do we have a map of the priority habitat areas and the priority preservation areas and? Is there a map?
Yep. Yeah, it's all, it's all done with the four ninety five partnership.
Right, okay, the four ninety five partnership, I actually do have a copy of, and that was done in two thousand and twelve. Um, I was just wondering if there are any place on our, like, zoning maps or online that. Someone could quickly look at to get an inventory of the locally, local priority development areas?
Uh, no, it it's, no, not, you'd have to go into the four ninety five partnership.
Okay, I have to look at it. I did look at it the other day, but the maps were so small, I couldn't even figure out, like, it showed the whole state. At least when I looked at it online, so to zone into Northborough and see where the priority habitats where it was like a green dot.
Well, it's not, again, the compact isn't so much about the priority habitats. It's, it's about the areas where you wanna focus development on, and then, and then, you know, each town also, as part of the exercise. Um, back in, you know, two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve, um, the, I was on the, the, uh, partnerships board at the time. And, um, and so we looked at, you know, where, where development was most likely, um, you know, to be occurring. Um, so, so again, not, doesn't need to be a huge focus here.
I just, as a planning board member, would be interested to see how many priority, um, habitat areas we have and where they are. I just didn't know if, if there was anywhere on a map that we could look at that. So, but is there any, there, do we have only like two priority habitat areas? Is it part of the? Open space plan? Do you know if it's in there?
Well, um, the, um, the heritage program in in Massachusetts doesn't necessarily map. The habitat priority areas because we don't want people. Sort of invading those priority habitat areas, they, we want those to stay protected. Um, so, um, I can, you know, certainly share with you, you know, the old information, um, from like two thousand and ten. Um, I don't know when the last time the plan was updated, um, by the partnership.
I just know down in Bartlett, there was one, we saw in our plan, there was a habitat, well, I forget what it's called now. And nature is a trail, and I think there's one over by two ninety, so I'd be interested to see where they were. Okay. So I guess for the first three, I just have a couple of questions, and some of them, Kathy, I could ask you offline, but I don't know if it's better to ask. As a planning board. Online.
Well, I think you should be discussing this in public, yeah.
Okay, okay, I just didn't know how late you wanted to go tonight.
Well, you know. But again, I, I have no idea, Amy, I mean, I, I, I'm sorry, Carrie, I don't mean to dominate this, but. Uh, you know, if Amy's the only one who's prepared to do this exercise, should, should you not do it another night?
No, I think it's fine to just run through.
That's open space, just pull it up, and they just went down and and John Campbell went down each of them, and I don't think any of them knew it was coming.
Alright, so let's just go down each and decide what have we done, or what is an easy task for us to check off the list? Is that what we'll do?
Sure, and I do have like five questions, cause I did take notes and, and as a planning board rep for opens, I mean, for master plan. It'd be good to have the answers going into the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so as we go down, she, um, you one dash five, and. The stormwater management bylaws, I think Kathy had mentioned, have been done.
Okay, so are you gonna write down like, or whose tracks, like, what's already checked off? Is this something?
I'll track, I'll track it, and unless somebody, if someone else can show me another one that we have done that I don't know of. I can track it and bring it forward on Thursday.
Okay.
We have, we have a master sheet that the, um, consultant that's working with the implementation committee has put together, and, you know, the group. Again, has only met twice, only once with the consultant and myself. Neither one of us were present at the last meeting. And, um, so that, the, the, the implementation committee, you know, the purpose of that, um, master sheet is. Um, is to sort of do exactly what you're doing tonight, is when, once the implementation committee comes up with. You know, which they've just started to do, is, you know, looking at the top three or four, um, short term recommendations. And then overall recommendations, um, you know, then we'll start using the sheet to track, um, who's, who's doing what, you know, what. Where we're at with the, the progress of each one of those.
Yeah, one thing we discussed that was trying to do, as much as we could in between meetings, as we only meet once a month. And the grant schedule for this year is gonna start coming up in December, January, so if there are items. That certain people wanna look at, you really have to get going. Okay, so, but I'm done with the first page, um. The second page. Those are all part of the downtown. And I think what the master plan implementation committee will probably come to is that, and we discussed it, is there will probably be needed a downtown revitalization committee. And there are some grants coming up next year that could help with some of the downtown revitalization too. So I don't know if there's any one on this page anyone wants to talk to. Some of them might change, like, when I read LU two dash three and it talks about mixed use in the downtown. That we do have some excuse, we do allow mixed use in the downtown. And because of COVID and, um, people ordering online right now. It, it, I don't know if we have a lot of commercial space that's available, so I don't know. How mixed use will work going forward, but I guess we can have consultants to talk to that, but if you look at like eighty nine West Main Street. All the apartments have been rented out or the condos have been sold, but no one has gone into any of the commercial space in the downstairs. So as a planning board, we might wanna look at. You know, it seems like the housing downtown is popular, but there is a lot of space for lease right now, so I don't know. How much more mixed use the town could absorb.
Right, honestly, Amy, I think on that, it's a little hard to assess in between last year and this year, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think a lot of things, and they talked about that with the master plan, some things might even change because COVID changed things. But I think for all the downtown. Design study, visual pre- preference surveys, I don't know, is there anything that the planning board could start on, like? Could we send out a visual preference survey or design study?
I think, um, one of the things, you know, first of all, you've created an implementation committee to, to take a look at what. What the pri- what the priorities should be, um, and again, they've only met twice so far. And, um, what, what we envision is that the, the, um, all of the downtown information. Is, is going to, uh, you know, the, as the, the implementation committee. Because that came up as one of the, the number one top priorities of several members. Um, so as we all suspected, you know, downtown, you know, rose to the top as far as a, um, a priority, uh, coming out of the master plan. So what we would, um, be doing is taking a look at all of the, uh, recommendations having to do with the master plan. Um, and then, I mean, excuse me, having to do with downtown, and then sorting through, you know, which, which are the first steps that we should take. You know, defining, um, you know, we have a boundary today. You know, defining, um, you know, we have a boundary today for downtown, but you know, we need to take a look at, well, what, what is the downtown? Do we want to expand the downtown? Do we want to redirect the downtown? Do we want to enlarge the downtown area? Um, and then, and then, you know, through that, you know, you would, you would sort of do these visioning sessions, and so it, it, it all has to come together as a package. You really just don't want to, you know, kind of spin off and do, do one thing. Uh, you know, I, I, I mean, it's, it's all gonna be part of a bigger picture.
Okay. I, I just, I just, uh, I think that that's something, um, that we would definitely want to collaborate on at the implementation committee, because you don't want to have open space going saying, which, what, what should we be looking at for that downtown committee, and then have duplication of efforts. Um, and a lot of energy just not really being as productive, so um, I know historic district has some interest in, and would like some input in that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, I think some of it too, like, you can, when it says develop a program to grow planting and sustained growth of street trees, some of that could actually be helped through the planning board with design review. You know, I think there are little areas that we can touch on. I think the big picture of downtown is gonna take a a group, but I think there are little areas where we can make a difference.
Yep.
And then as there are, so obviously there are grants out there because we see our neighbors getting them. So how do we still apply for those grants? Like say the facades downtown, like I think, I forget which town got something about that, but if we wanted to do little things like that, or any of these little grants along the way, how do we take advantage of them like our neighbors are doing without waiting for this?
Well, it, it's not, it's not so much, um, um, patience is a part of this whole process, um, as we, as we all know. But, um, the, you know, a facade, say if you wanted to do a facade improvement. Um, and so we would probably look towards the Main Street program, um, uh, at DHCD, um, about doing a, a facade improvement. Um, but I would think, first of all, in the bigger picture, what you want to do is, again, you, you want to, you want to define, um, what, you know, what, what it is that you want in, in the downtown, or, or do you want to make any changes in the downtown? You know, I think those things first have to be decided first, and then you talk about, okay, well, if that, if, if we want to introduce um, other kinds of uses and, and, you know, do we want to change the density of the downtown? Um, do, you know, do we want to, um, you, you know, change where the, uh, parking lots are going to be located? I mean, that all has to do with, with the design of the building and, and what that footprint is going to look like. And then, and then you can, you know, you, then you develop some design standards, um, because you really can't have a facade program unless you have standards in place, um, that you, that you have to physically show people. Um, so, you know, and, and the design, um, guidelines that we have may turn out to be just absolutely appropriate. You know, there may not need to be any changes, but you're gonna go through that, that, you know, that whole discussion about, um, is, you know, do, do we want to make any changes? And then, you know, then you can be like, okay, well, this is what we want the downtown to look like, look at. All right, well, let's, let's, you know, apply for a facade grant, and so that, so that we've got, you know, three or four thousand dollars of, you know, pocket money that we can, um, you know, distribute to, um, to applicants. Um, that, you know, could help with their sign improvements or, um, uh, um, awnings or, you know, things like that.
So in parallel, does it make sense then for Amy, for your, for designer view to start looking at these design standards, just as like doing something in parallel so that if, when the time comes, we don't start over fresh looking at design standards if we know, we at least need to review them, or have we already reviewed them? It's not necessary.
No, well, we have, we have designed standards for the, for the downtown. Um, and I, you know, um, going back to, you know, something that, um, that Ashley mentioned, we, the, the town, you know, every town in Massachusetts, um, is about to, you know, come into several million dollars of, of, in short, what we're calling COVID money. Um, but part of that is, I, I mean, you know, I've already had the discussion with, with the town administrator. Part of that is going to be, um, uh, earmarked for, for our downtown project. Um, one of the things that, um, that I'm working on right now is putting together a capital budget for this year. You know, it'll go, it'll go to town meeting this year, so that there will be a capital, um, budget available for, um, the downtown work, for, uh, you know, starting off, whether you want to call it a feasibility study or, or whatever it is. But, you know, ta- again, taking all of these out of the master plan, you know, having the implementation committee um, rank which ones that they want to, um, uh, you know, start with, and then, and, you know, and off we go with our downtown project.
Mm-hmm, so Amy, what is there?
Okay, I think that's all great information, because that was something I was gonna ask is, you know, I was gonna ask if our financial planning person could come in and speak to it, but it sounds like Kathy is going to go with something in the budget, so it would be great to see that once it's done, what's gonna go into the budget for planning for downtown redevelopment. But back to the design review, they're guidelines, not standards, so I, I do think the design review guidelines are good. I just, I'm not sure if they were really enforced that highly, like they've been good for years saying, you know, you shouldn't have parking this way and trees that way, and I was thinking at the next design review meeting too, is we should discuss, there are streetscapes trees that we could have a list of to use when you're doing a downtown application. And, and so we have the appropriate trees being put in place, and if there's a building that can't have trees, maybe there are planters, so I do, I was planning on hopefully meeting with design review and having a nice discussion about it. But I guess one thing that does happen is what happens if you can't really enforce the design review guidelines, like like we have sideways buildings and, and other things, I don't want to go into details, but there were certain things that could have made a difference, but didn't, even though we had the design review guidelines, so I don't know, we'll look into it, I have some ideas.
Okay.
But, um, I'm happy to hear there is gonna be money in the capital budget for the downtown plan, so maybe we can skip talking about those right now. So I guess I can, unless anyone has questions, I can just ask the last couple of questions I had.
No, are we, or is there anything else we need to check off on this section?
The only thing I think we've done is we've done the hazardous waste bylaw, and already, you know, that would be checked off. Um, but the perform the sixty-one programs, that's open space. There's townwide guidelines for commercial industrial development. We actually do have design review guidelines for industrial, I have a copy, but I don't know if they were ever accepted or implemented, so we could review those.
Amy.
Okay, I was just double checking, I've never heard them talk about.
They were.
Are they online too, for people to be able to access?
They, they should be, if they're not, Amy, I'll double check, but I mean, they, they should be, because that was a few years ago.
Right, yeah.
Um, but, but I'll, I'll, I'll certainly check on those.
Okay, one of the, um, LU four dash two, we had talked about last time. It's a goal that says consider updating, expanding the existing major commercial overlay district for Route twenty. So that was something we actually discussed about as a planning board at our last meeting. I don't know if that's something that we would want to talk about this year, or if you want to wait for master plan. Where did we say it stopped? At Kimball Sand? Kathy, the commercial overlay?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's on the, yeah, it's on the industrial, um, zoned property on the, on the southwest cutoff. So he basically, yeah, so I mean, it goes past Kimball Sand, it's the, it's the length of, um, you know, basically from Route nine, um, you know, all across North Road Crossing, Kimball Sand, um, I forgot the last property that's, that's, that's in there, because Kimball Sand is in between both, you know, the driveways for North Road Crossing. Um, so I, I, I think it goes right to the, the secondary entrance, um, to North Road Crossing. That, that's the industrial district.
Okay.
And the overlay district applies to all of that, that part of the industrial district on the southwest cutoff.
So where we have a goal, LU, or recommendation, LU four dash two, consider updating and expanding the existing major commercial overlay district. Was the town thinking of making it go further down the road? I'm just curious.
I, I think, I think so, I mean, I think that, that, again, that's all part of the discussion is, you know, right now, um, the, the kind of development, the, the development of Route nine is very limited because there is not sewer capacity. Um, so if sewer capacity were to ever happen on Route nine, you know, you would probably want to look at, um, you know, bringing in some of the components from the major commercial overlay district, you know, into the highway, into the highway district.
But not into the residential, you're going highway.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay, that was a question I was thinking.
Yeah.
And the LU four dash three talks about increasing water sewer capacity, but right now we really can't, right? That's up to Marlborough.
Yeah, well, it, it, the, on Route nine, it's, it's actually a Westboro issue.
Yeah.
Um, because, um, uh, because that, it, I, I mean, and it's a much bigger discussion than, than, than I'm, um, than I have the, the, the knowledge for. Um, but, um, you know, that, that's something that, you know, we could probably talk with the, you know, DPW director about. Um, and then, and obviously they're a partner to, to this, you know, as far as the, um, the, uh, you know, the, the partners and the leadership as far as how these recommendations get implemented.
Mm-hmm, so really, if it's contingent on sewer, then maybe LU four dash two is not as short term as we think. Because we did talk and consider updating it, I think we decided maybe it's more about looking at the uses versus the overlay. I don't know if we reached that final conclusion, but um, if, if it's in, in any way connected to the sewer water capacity, I don't know how that changes the timeline. Maybe not as simple as it would look here, short term, low money, high priority, seems like it would be easy, but.
And, and some of the things too, as far as like, just, you sort of picking on this one, but, you know, as far as updating, you know, you might want to look at, um, you know, and, and you might not, but you might want to look at, are there other uses that we would want to see in the major commercial overlay district, you know, as it exists today? Are there other uses? You know, it, if you look at the bylaw, there's certain uses that are allowed by rights in, in the overlay district, and then there's certain uses that are allowed by special permit. You know, you might want to take a look at that at some point, is, you know, do we need to switch that up at all? Um, to encourage additional, you know, development.
So the, there, is there a difference between the major commercial overlay districts and the overlay, commercial overlay district?
No, no, the only, the only thing that we have is the major commercial overlay district.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Um, and that is over all the industrial zones in town?
Just in, just in the southwest corner, Millie, just, just in all the industrial land, um, down by Route twenty, uh, you know, on both sides of Route twenty and, um, up to Route nine. So basically, you know, in a real ballpark, it's, it, well, it's a ballpark, no pun intended, but the, um, the, the fields, the medical facilities.
Yeah.
And then across the street, you know, the North Road Crossing, the upper portion, the lower portion, um, Kimball Sand. So that's, that's the area that where, that, that, that overlay district was designed for.
Okay, and so when it, when we're talking about expanding it, you're talking about expanding it in size or expanding it in use?
Uh, you could be doing both.
Both.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So if we go down to the next one, I don't know.
You want the next page, Amy?
Sure. That seemed more of, um, open space, they cover those already. For goal one, the highlights, so I don't think we need to do anything there. And for goal two, it seems like we're getting into historic, which Millie said Norm has been going through.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's under, that's under, um, I mean, the, the historic district commission's working on that plan now, right, Millie?
Yep.
The preservation plan?
Yep. Yep, so that's why I thought we had to go through things, because it seems like open space is working on things, the historic is working on things. So what are we as a planning board gonna do to help?
Mm-hmm.
Those are all historic.
I think you're, I think you're gonna be a lot busier than, than you might anticipate, um, once this downtown um, gets going.
Yep. Okay, and, um, I see with NC H three dash one, it identifies short and long-term planning goals. I just had a question about the Westboro State Hospital land, it's three hundred acres, and half of it is RC and half of it is industrial. I was just wondering Kathy, has it ever been offered to Northborough to be able to purchase that land? Like I know Westboro bought ninety-five acres of their Westboro State land. I was just wondering the background of the Northborough land.
It, it's quite, it's quite different in, in Northborough. Um, the three hundred acres that Amy's referring to um, is ki- kind of roughly, um, on both sides of Lyman Street, you know, kind of divided by Lyman Street. And, um, and that property is already, um, um, under the control of other state agencies. So that, even though it's, it's kind of like this tiered ownership with state land, so even though that land was originally controlled by the Westboro State Hospital, um, that property years ago, um, was, um, uh, it, it, when, when the, when the, when the state deems it to be, um, no longer an asset for the original use, which was the Westboro State Hospital. And again, this goes back years, this, this is way before Westboro was able to purchase the buildings that they were able to purchase. Um, that land, those three hundred acres are roughly divided by the Department of Agriculture and by the, um, um, Fish and Wildlife. So that's, that has never been on the table, um, as far as, you know, being offered to, to Northborough. Um, several years ago, ten, at least ten years ago, um, when there was a joint committee between, um, the towns of Westboro and Northborough, and we worked with the state, um, about the disposal of the Westboro State Hospital. Um, the, um, Westboro was, you know, the majority of the hospital, the majority of the buildings are all in Westboro. So the state, the state, um, determined that all of that land, um, could be sold. So the, the town did not necessarily have to purchase that, but it was offered to the town first, and the town did purchase it. And then the town sold it, um, for the development of, you know, what you see now being built. It's, I, I'm not, I think it's a fifty-five and older community, and then the state, I, excuse me, the town did keep, you know, several acres and, uh, you know, they've since built, you know, built pickleball courts, and, um, I think there's some field space there, and um, so, you know, they, they, they kept a lot of it for their own purposes, for their own recreational purposes. That, at the time, when, when all of that was happening, the only property that, um, was potentially going to be disposed of by the state that's in Northborough is about four acres that's in between, um, Hospital Road and Lyman Street. And, um, and also then across the street from that on Lyman Street, where you, where you see, um, Chauncey Hall, um, which is the biggest brick building that's in Northborough there. Um, so you, you know, people may not recognize, I mean, know what Chauncey Hall is, but anyways, you see that, and then you see all these out, outbuildings. So, um, So um, but the but what what happens is it's it's offered to state agencies. And and that state agency, um the Division of Capital Asset Management decided to keep that property. And um you will eventually be seeing a a proposal there. They are going to be creating a maintenance facility. Um, it's a state of the art um as far as energy consumption, um gold level. Uh, maintenance facility that they are um uh going to be there, uh that they are going to build there. So all of the Chauncey Hall and all of those buildings um are not um going to be offered to the town. So the only potential um is that um four or so acres that it's like, it's a small triangular piece. Again, in between um state road and the state, uh it's called Hospital Road and then Lyman Street. So um we have been um uh requesting information from the state as to whether that or not. That's even something that they're gonna consider um uh disposing of. So if if and when, that's that's basically the the land that we could potentially be looking at. But that's and and that that's it, so.
Okay, it was just in the master plan until we had three hundred acres, so it's deceiving.
Well, it's it's three hundred acres of state hospital land. It's not three hundred acres of town land.
Yep, so could that ever be sold in the future or there um protections in place on it?
Well, I'm but I I I I don't know what the, you know, arrangements are with those other state agencies, but.
Yeah, because when I looked at the GIS map unless, I don't know how accurate GIS maps are. But it still said it was Westboro State Hospital land.
It'll always be considered Westboro State Hospital land. Then then there's, so there's tiers to the ownership. Um, so it's basically, it's state land.
Yeah, I know we have some parcels in town that say mass fish and wildlife. So, but so this is Westboro State Hospital land. But you think, you said that mass fish and wildlife, it owns half of it?
Yeah, yep, they they um, I I mean, owner owns might not be the the correct term. Because the but because the state owns it and these are state agencies and the state agencies are offered. State land as to whether or not, you know, they want to add it to their holdings. So. There's agricultural land out there and there's fish and wildlife land out there.
Is there a way to find out if it's protected, you know, some of them are protected that they'll never be developed? I know you said there's gonna be a maintenance facility, but. I was just wondering how we could find out if there are protections in place for Northborough. Or if that's something maybe I should ask open space.
What what do you mean protections, Amy? That that the state has?
Yeah, did the mass wild, fish and wildlife, do they have like a conservation restriction on it or do they have? You know, we have a lot of properties in town that we have conservation restrictions on that cannot be built on. Of the mass fish and wildlife areas of those. Restricted or could they be sold in the future? I was just curious.
Um, well, um, sure, anything can be sold. But um, the it any state land, the 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 process that the legislature has set out. Is that first state land is offered to other state agencies. And then if the state agencies pass on it, then it's offered to the community.
Do you know, I'm just curious, do you know what that maintenance facility is? Is it like for trucks and vehicles or is it, what are they maintaining there?
Yeah, it's for all of their vehicles.
It's good to know. I was just curious. About the three hundred acres because it's been out there a lot. All right. And I'm sure no one has, you probably don't have enough data on White Cliffs, they haven't met for a long time.
Um, no, um, we, I I think we met once or twice during COVID. There um, there's a, there's a considerate, um, well, consideration, there's a discussion right now about when the next meeting is going to be. But I don't have a date for that.
Okay, so let's start meeting again. Where was that left?
Um, there, um, well, I I mean, I I I gotta go back and and refresh myself. I I don't want to misspeak at this meeting, but uh, you know, there was a whole feasibility study done. Um, as far as, um, you know, and there was a number of options that were laid out as far as what to, you know, what could potentially happen with the property.
Okay, and thirteen Church Street is supposed to go to RFQ?
Yes, that has been um drafted and um that's been re- being reviewed by staff right now.
Okay. And Boundary Street is probably still up in the air.
Yeah, I'm not aware of anything.
Anything on that? I just want to touch on all these because I know people ask a lot. And for West Main Street was talked in detail last night at the selectmen's meeting. For anybody who didn't watch it, I think the town administrator, I don't want to speak to it all either, but. He said it was going to come back to the town next year, May twenty twenty-two. And once the town takes it back, then there'll probably be a feasibility study then to decide what to do with it. That's what I get out of the selectmen's meeting last night. Did you, is that what you know, Kathy, too?
I I was at the trails committee meeting last night, so I I I didn't hear the discussion last night.
Okay, they asked the town administrator and he said, May twenty twenty-two, it comes back to the town and. And then they decide do they surplus it or use it or. What they're gonna do with that.
Will we go on to the next page, Amy?
Sure, unless anyone else has questions. Okay, so for housing. That's also a big bundle, so I think that would probably have a committee coming out of master plan implementation if I had to guess. Right now, the downtown revitalization was number one, so. Housing probably isn't going to be talked about right away unless there's somebody, unless somebody here would like to talk about any of these.
Yeah, I guess the only thing, you know, uh, this is, looks like it may not be the first thing to go, but we have talked in the past about. Um, affordable senior housing and possibly having some sort of forum or ability to hear like some sort of feedback. Where we can figure out where would seniors want to live. We had that whole discussion about, do they really want to live downtown where they can't park? Or, you know, we just didn't really know, or they really want to leave their homes? Are they looking for bigger, smaller? We just had a lot of questions around that. I think at some point, I don't know the right timing, but if we're going to explore these different uses. Or specifically affordable housing and affordable senior housing. You know, when do, when's the right timing to have that sort of feedback session, I guess from anybody?
I actually um have learned recently through my mother-in-law, she lives in Linfield. And they have an amazing senior housing. Ideas that if if Northborough wanted to look into it, they could. But where she bought a condo, they sell it like cheap, so she got like a twelve hundred square foot condo for two hundred and fifty thousand. But in the end, you have to sell it back to the town and it goes to the next person on the list. And they have a committee and the prices go up a little bit each year and their condo fees. But it seems really affordable for the seniors who want a smaller place to live, they want to stay in town. And it was actually a really beautiful development. And um, she loves living there and there's a lot of, but but it's pretty much the prices. Stay stable and they stay cheap for that because Linfield is way more expensive than even Northborough. So to find something for two hundred and fifty thousand in Linfield would be hard to do. But they have three senior developments in their town and they're all run that same way. And it's very popular, she was on a fifteen-year waiting list. Yep, so but it's something that I think Northbrook could even look into. I I found it online at their um, on their town webpage and it explains the whole process. It's really interesting.
Would you mind sharing that?
Sure, I could email that to everybody or email it to Kathy and she could forward it.
What what defines senior housing as opposed to our retirement or over fifty-five?
This was actually over fifty-five, surprisingly, or over fifty-eight and you had to be a resident of the town. But she's, everybody there is seventy and over. Maybe at fifty-five they get on the list. But most of the people don't want to live there at fifty-five, you know?
Right, yeah.
So even though it's fifty-five and over, she would say her and all her friends, nobody there is under seventy.
Interesting, yeah.
But it's really pretty too, like the way they developed the whole area there. So, but I can forward it out and if you read it, it's like only a one-page document, but it it was a really good idea. And I don't even think, I asked her if it was a town employee that ran the housing committee. And she said he was a retired police officer, but he wasn't an employee of the town now. But they have meetings, they have their own committee.
I mean, and and some of these things say ongoing, though I don't know um, to what extent we're proactively doing it. So, for example, H one dash three. I don't know to what extent we as a board are working with anybody in particular. Is that something we should be doing or how do, how would that even? Get started. So let's see, that's ongoing, couple ongoing. Awareness around accessory dwelling units, I think we added to our bylaw last year. I don't know if we can check it off, there are still, maybe maybe there's more to come there.
There might also be, there, I think on that one, there are a couple other committees on that, if I'm looking at it correctly. H one dash three. Who else is on that?
Well, the Housing Authority, the partners, looks like BOS, us. Wh- who's HPC?
Uh, Housing Partnership uh Committee. I think is, I think that's what it is. Right, right, that was um, it 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 doesn't exist right now, but that's one of the recommendations in here.
They've got it to do.
It's about, you know, um restarting.
Yeah.
Housing Partnership.
Oh, all right, so maybe when that, as that happens, like we could invite them to a board meeting and just have a conversation or learn more about.
We can help them.
You want the next page? Amy?
Sure, sure. Okay, so I'm just trying to read. So this is the um downtown visualization study. So this will be all part of the downtown plan? In the housing production plan, we'll go back to the housing committee that doesn't exist yet.
We we've done a housing production plan um in the past with, you know, I don't believe that we had. Yeah, we, I don't think we had a housing partnership at that time. I I think it had already um um stopped meeting. But your your housing production plan is all about. You know, where where are you going to put um affordable housing? If if you want to do a housing production plan. Where you're, where you're gonna put it, how many units and how many years are you, you know, are you going to do it? So it it's a very proactive plan, you know, it's not just something that, you know, you we take a look at and say, oh, wouldn't it be nice? It's it's actually, okay, we um, like a lot of communities say they'll put together housing production plan. If they um are surplusing um some town property um to a to a developer. And the the RFQ that goes out or the RFP that goes out is all about, you know, if. If you want to um, you know, purchase these, whatever, you know, twenty acres from the town. Then, you know, you're gonna build us, you know, eighty percent of the units are gonna be affordable housing, you know, I mean, I'm just making these numbers up, but. So so your housing production plan is something that's very um act, proactive. And when we did ours, um, we we timed it knowing that the Avalon development was coming. And so we were able to get credit for having a housing production plan. Uh, because it was going to be carried out within the next five years um with the development of. Avalon and, you know, twenty-five percent of those, that development being affordable. So we we did the plan and then we were able to say, you you know, we we were successful in that plan.
Not sure that would then need to be a short-term plan, only because, you know, we just did it and we did Avalon. And I also went through the Department of Housing and Community Development, forty B subsidized housing inventory that comes out every year. And um seventy-seven out of three hundred and fifty-one towns have met the ten percent. For forty B and we're one of them. So that's only twenty-two percent of the towns in the state, which is amazing, but for Northborough, we're we're pretty good. You know, we're high up on that list compared to some of the others. Just a little kudos to the town, I think they've, you know, we have done good with open space, with housing. I do think there are a lot of good, a lot of good has happened. So now we'll focus on downtown. If the committee so chooses. And that rail trail, sounds like a good idea to me now. Little plugs here and there, sorry. This goes back to the cost of community services study, so we'd have to do that first. And they'd have to revive the housing partnership, so those pretty, those probably aren't short-term right now. Economic development that all points back to downtown. And here's the signage and facades. Create a downtown planning revitalization committee. Hopefully that will happen pretty quick. In the master plan implementation committee. So I unless anyone else has questions, I think these will all come out of the master plan.
Where um, isn't there creation of an economic development committee of sorts in this as well?
Yep, I think there is, yeah, it must be down further.
Yeah, that's on, yeah. Under economic development, I think. Yeah, it's under economic development recommendation. Number ED dash two.
In these pages, these are midterms, so we can probably go forward. Oh, was it on that page, Millie? Okay, so it was on that page, it just wasn't under us, so.
So if you scroll up for a second, it was under um. Board of Selectmen.
Having fun, Kathy? Are you having fun? We're all like, what?
ED two, I think it's the next one, it's in the next one, yep, there we are. Evaluate, okay, so that's under just Board of Selectmen on that one. I mean. This is a moderate priority, I guess, that's listed here. I'd argue for, they go, it goes hand in hand with with downtown. If we're gonna bother with revitalizing downtown, I think economic development goes hand in hand with making sure the business, right businesses get in there and they survive. Or else what have we built it for? So just to consider, maybe to, if there's a, if there's a feedback opportunity for you.
Okay, the ED two dash three you're talking about?
No, ED two dash one.
Oh, okay, that's short term.
Oh, it's just a short term, okay, and what is moderate? Is that the priority level?
Uh, um, that is, yeah.
Priority. I just think it goes hand in hand with downtown if we're, what's going to go, if we create this amazing downtown. We want to make sure we can support it.
Right, yeah.
Economic development perspective, okay.
I think that might have been one that was picked by a lot of members as a priority. I'm not sure, I have to go back. I think that might have been one that was picked by a lot of members as a priority, I'm not sure, I have to go back and look again. All right, okay. E D two dash five, we can explore the idea of fiscal impact assessments to mitigation funding, I don't, you know, we're almost at build-out. So I didn't know, with the big parcels that are left, that was actually a question I had um, for Kathy, and maybe as a board we can ask for it, or, or I'll make her ask for it. Was, let me see where I wrote it down, there are only so many acres left of commercial and industrial land. And I thought it would be great to get a map, like the commercial zone and the industrial zone, and just show where the spaces that are left to be developed. So we can see, I think it was three hundred acres of industrial and only sixty-seven acres of commercial. But I think as a planning board and as a master plan implementation committee, I think it would be good to see where those parcels are. And that would also help, you know, say we want to add something, something commercial to industrial, we could say, well, what would go there? If it's in between, I'm just using example, but say it's in between two big and like distribution centers, then there are, a lot of things probably wouldn't really fit there, but if it's between, you know, something small, then maybe there would be another use. There are some spaces on Barefoot that could be commercial uses right off the rail trail, not that I'm making another plug. And I think it's like in Vermont, when you go along the rail trail, and they do have a lot of commercial uses. Like restaurants and bike shops. But, but I don't know what, do you guys agree, you, you know, I don't know, Kathy, is that hard to do? Could we get a map, just a zoning map and just maybe a circle or a star where the acreage is left and how many acres?
Um, sure, um, sure, I mean, uh, you know, and any kind of, any kind of mapping is possible. Um, and, but it, it, just like we're still working on, you know, the, the assignment about um, the, the property on, uh, um, Brigham Street. Um, you know, we, just a two-second update on that, um, but just to show you how long it takes to, because there's only one person in the department that's, that's working on this. Um, I mean, there is only one person in that department. Um, he's down a, a full-time staff person right now. But the, um, you know, the, the project for the Brigham Street is, what I had, you know, talked about at the past couple of meetings was that we, we didn't have a way to, to, um, determine, uh, to, to plug in the, the frontage. Um, it's, you know, to get over a certain amount of frontage and acreage, you know, because that, that's what you were looking at was, you know, over a certain amount of square footage, and then over a certain amount of square, square, I mean, if, um, feet for the frontage, and how many parcels does that then represent? And so that's the, we brought in a consultant to help us with that, um, they, are one of our mapping consultants. And so they did come up with methodology as to how to evaluate the frontage, and then that's something that David Kane is working on right now. And, and, um, he will probably be, um, at one of your December meetings, or whenever you're going to meet in December. Um, he will be able to come in and, and give you a, um, a, you know, a presentation about that, and how many parcels that, that represents. So to look at, just to say, well, how many vacant commercial properties do we have, how many industrial properties? It's, it sounds like a really easy question, but, you know, we need to know how deep you want to go into this. Because we have assessors information that we can just look at, and they look at, you know, just, you know, they're, they're coming at it from a, a tax standpoint. So they either have land that, that they consider to be vacant. Um, but yet a piece of property that, that they considered, that the assessors might consider to be vacant. If you then go into, like, how, as, as planners, how we would look at that is, okay, well, just because it's vacant doesn't mean that it's developable. So then you want to, you almost then end up doing like a build-out analysis, where you have to look at, okay, well, you know, how many, how much of that land is vacant, and then how much, what percentage do we take out for infrastructure such as roads, what do we take out for a percentage for slopes, we take out a percentage for wetlands? So if you're looking for just like a broad number, um, just, you know, sort of as a conversation starter here, we could use the assessors' information. And, and come up with a map that would show you what is considered vacant right now in the commercial districts, in the business districts, and what's considered vacant in the industrial districts.
Okay, well, I guess in the master plan, there was a build-out analysis done. So when you read the land use section, it says there are three hundred acres of undeveloped industrial land. And it might have even said, I don't have it in front of me now, might even said like thirty acres of it cannot be developed for various reasons. I just didn't know if, because you went through the build-out analysis with the consultants, if you knew or remembered where those parcels were, like, did they come up when you did them before?
I, I didn't do that analysis with the consultants as far as, I, I didn't end up with a map. You know, I mean, that wasn't part of our scope, so we didn't end up with a, a map that mapped out all of that, that acreage. But I'm saying what we, what we can do with existing data, which is up, more updated than from the master plan, because that's about three years old. The data, um, with, with today's assessors' information, we could provide a map, which I think would be a good starting point for what it is that you want to talk about.
Okay, okay, if you think that.
Does it, does everyone agree with that, wanting a map like that?
I think it would be helpful if it's easy enough, or not easy, but possible.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, that, that's, that, that's an easy ask, that's like, uh, you know, just a few hours of putting that map together. Okay.
Okay, that would be great, because then we can get a feel for what is left. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm just reading down what's on this page. Seems like they would all fall under. Let's see. For E D three dash one, where it says identify and encourage opportunities to incorporate office or incubate, incubator-like concepts into underoccupied spaces, is that something that we could do with the bylaw, like, could we encourage these, I think Hudson has an incubator office space in an old warehouse or factory? Is that something that can be, it's a kind of a good idea with a lot of people working from home, and there might be a location, I don't know if there's any developer interested, or someone who.
You already have one of those, Amy, there's already a building that's over behind, um, across from Remains, those buildings are all broken up into small cubicles or small offices of that style that's already happening in town.
So Fox Meadow?
Yes.
But, so people also like, say my husband has a meeting and it's too loud here at home, I can say, you can rent out an office for an afternoon?
Uh, no, I don't know about that, but they have a model there where they might have that, similar to it. You can always go to Starbucks.
That's, that might be allowed too, but I was just wondering if, yeah, what you were meaning, was it, is it like monthly rentals or hourly rentals, or you don't know?
Is the incubator concept like a WeWork, is that what that is? Or like the new place over in, for the Apex Center?
I think so, uh, that, that's my understanding, or of, of what it could be.
The other thing is that I think some of the incubator concepts are a little bit more long-term, in the sense that you actually can rent a space for like, a project completion term, like six, nine months, you know, a, a business may come in and need a certain amount of space for six months, eight months to do a project, and then they're out.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure what it was, because I know in Hudson, like I said, they had a place where I think you can just rent it by the day.
And, and that might be an option too.
Yeah, where, I think it was one building where it had just a bunch of different offices and shared copiers and.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So is this something, not necessarily for this year, but it sounds like, it looks like it's related to land use, so this may be a use that we consider. If it's something like a WeWork, and someone wanted that as a, well, is that, yeah, I guess that's a use.
It'd be interesting, because it'd be good to, I, I'm not sure what, you know, popular, like, what are other towns doing that are popular that we might want to offer here in Northborough? But maybe that's where an economic development committee and person could help us. I don't know, I was just, part of this, I was trying to think, you know, we had talked about commercial and industrial. Is there anything there? So yes, for publicly controlled sites, such as the Westboro State Hospital, that would come off of that recommendation, because it doesn't sound like we can develop a master plan to address it if we ha, we don't have control over it.
We're still waiting for, um, you know, because I mean, that, that, that land in the middle could potentially be something, if, if they are inclined to dispose of it and offer it to the town. Um, but, you know, it's, it's not the amount of acreage that we originally thought, because we were thinking more, not of the three hundred acres, Amy, but we were thinking of the Chauncey Hall area. Um, that's, that, that, that building complex and that land associated with it is what we, when I say we, what, you know, the, when we have the, um, the, the joint committee between Westboro and Northboro. At the time, that's what Northboro was looking at, was that we could potentially end up with Chauncey Hall and the land around it.
But now there's no way.
We, we had never envisioned the three hundred acres, no, because the state's using it, but, I mean, the state.
Okay, but that might be something good to tell the master plan committee, like, you wouldn't, there is no need for a master plan for the Westboro State Hospital land, because with four acres, you don't really need a master plan.
You want to go on to the open space?
Sure, yep. I heard the dog park is going to be in front of CPC? Is that true, or?
Yep, but application has been submitted, um, by the Recreation Department in the DPW.
Okay, have they picked the property yet, or no?
No, that, that's what this is about, is a feasibility study, um, to take a look at, um, you know, sites. Um, you know, potential sites in town, and to, um, do a mini-analysis of each one of the sites, um, as to whether it would work or not.
Okay, is that still, was that around forty thousand?
Um, I, I don't remember what, I, I, I don't remember what the application was for.
Okay, just trying to say how much money there is. Okay, so I guess we can keep going. MVP was already done, right?
Yep, yep.
Oh, I'm, are we on, okay, there we go.
Yeah, into public facilities.
Yep. Um, future growth projections, we'd probably have to get from somebody else. And reuse repurposed share space at municipal buildings that might come up next year with the Old Town Hall.
Yeah, the Old Town Hall, and then you've got the, um, the, you know, the current fire station, which at, at some point, um, will, you know, will be relocated to the new site. So you've got that building also to think about.
Wakeless.
Yeah, White Cliffs, yep.
So, um, this obviously isn't ours, but as a marketing person, I have to say it. For the, I think COVID really, um, underlined the, underscored the importance of being able to communicate in a different way with different people, very, in a quick manner, and I think the town obviously, you know, responded to the situation, and we had the code red alerts and stuff like that, but if you look at P F S one dash six, um, maybe that's something that ticks up a notch in priority, just based on what happened, just experiencing that in COVID, and maybe we learned some lessons from it, or, and that would be great to have a knowledge share on, you know, what did we learn? What do we wish we had, what would be great to have the next, hopefully the next time we never have, but in the event we do, you know.
That's a good point.
Then we haven't done transportation, oh, here we go, okay.
So how do we get ourselves on the next round of complete streets, do we, what do we need? I know it's not as simple as it sounds, so what, is there something like we can do in parallel to help prep for that, or how do we make that?
Yeah, well, actually, the, um, I, I can get you an update, um, um, for your next meeting. But the, um, uh, Department of Public Works is, is working on, um, complete street, uh, application.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that's, so that is something that they are presently working on.
Great.
And then also, this, this next one, um, I, 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 I need stronger glasses or something, but, um, the, uh, as far as the sidewalk improvements, um, that is also something that I know that the DPW is working on, um, is coming up with, um, I, I, I don't know if they're, if there's, if they have done it, or they're in the process of doing it, but doing a sidewalk inventory, um, examining, you know, it's sort of, uh, ranking the conditions of all of the existing sidewalks, and then looking at, um, where connections need to be made as a priority. Uh, you know, between either, you know, one neighborhood and another, or even just within an existing neighborhood. So I know that's, that's all happening, i- 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 it's, it's all evolving, um, with the DPW right now. But I can get you an update on both of those, um, for, you know, an upcoming meeting.
It's really good to hear, I'll have to thank them for us, because I think those were like number one things that the Master Plan Implementation Committee were, um, they were looking at sidewalks. So that's great that it's already started. That would be a big A. I think that would probably, you know, we could meet with the Board of Selectmen on that, but that would probably be. It's already been discussed, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, it, you know, when the, when the whole, on one hand, it kind of seems like ancient history, but I mean, when the whole, um, signalization of the downtown was done, um, at that time, it was explored with mass D O T about, um, you know, connecting, connecting Church Street to, you know, Gale. Um, I, I, I mean, you know, there were a variety of, of, um, traffic patterns examined. Um, as, as far as how to lessen the congestion in the downtown. Was there a way to more directly connect South Street to Church Street and? Um, and the, you know, the present configuration is what was, uh, uh, I guess adopted or or, um. Um, you know, agreed to to stay with that present configuration, but, you know, I think. To me, I'm not an engineer, but I think. Also part of looking at the downtown, and if we, um, if we talk about. You know, expanding. And it, and when I say expanding, I don't mean, um. You know, I mean, it's not a a physical expansion, but I mean, kind of like what what we envisioned downtown to be, you know, did. I think people envision a little bit more of Church Street than we normally had in the past to be part of the downtown, like, you know, all the. Maybe all the way to the Unitarian Church, you know, that's, and and, you know, the new bridge over over the, um. Cold Harbor and, you know, it, that's all part of the downtown, the the selling of the, um, you know, the old, old fire station. Um, you know, then looking at possibly, you know, it, wha- what could happen if if the town, um. You know, whatever happens with Four West Main Street and and then, you know, the land that's behind it, you know, so. Kind of reshaping where downtown is or what we consider to be downtown, and I think, you know, that's another chance to look at. Road patterns and and, um, sidewalks and, you know, the whole, again, walkability and just how people get around downtown.
That sounds good.
I don't know if any of us will still be here with. When something like that comes to me, but. And I don't think there was anything else, Amy, as far as highlighting.
Okay, thanks, I do think it was good for us to go through and. If there's anything someone has a committee that wants us to bring forward as like the planning board rapper. Anytime. You know, we can all discuss it as a group and I can bring it forward.
Thank you for facilitating.
Yeah, that was a lot, thank you, Amy.
Yeah, or Kathy.
Well, that too, yeah.
And it was good to get a lot of those answers too, because some of those questions have been asked over and over again, so it's good to. Get an idea of where we stand and where we're going.
Okay, anything else on that?
Yep, I'm just looking at down my, I had a list of questions in a notebook, but I think we, we got all of them.
How many things do we check off? Just two?
I think so. But maybe we could do a couple more.
All right.
We have to compete with these other committees.
Two down, we don't know how many to go. Okay, um. Getting to, so obviously, we still have town meeting bylaws discussion, what I was thinking for this, um. Is if there are any changes since the last meeting, so if anyone wants to bring forth, if you did any additional research or wanted to consider additional factors. Um, we can go through each and everyone if you want, but we've done that a couple of times, I wasn't sure if tonight, we just want to talk about. Any updates since the last time. And then what our next, uh, setting up what our next steps would be, over just an overall approach to how we want to handle the bylaws.
I had a couple, I have, I have one that I'm starting, so I'm not really ready to go forward with it yet. But I am going to take one of those CTPC classes. And it talked about criteria you should have. In your zoning and I have been looking at other towns and special permit criteria. Insight plan criterion conditions, and there were a couple I think were missing. Majority of towns are the same, but there might be one or two. And I just wanted to bring it forward after I took the class on, um, November fifteenth, just to see what they have for input. In the class. I think it was about writing defensible decisions. But it it talked about. Special permit criteria that you want to have in your bylaw, but it didn't say what it was, so. I want to go to the class and hear what they say, and maybe it's something we already have.
It's virtual, I'm just looking, you're just reminding me to. Take a look at this, so the, it's all virtual, is that correct?
So, and they're all different nights, I was going to sign up for four of them. It's much easier now that they're virtual.
Yeah.
Okay, any other updates?
Um, I did reach out to Bob Federico to see if he has any input or, um. Information or, uh, guidance for the Silver House. Um, options, so I haven't, I I I only reached out to him on Thursday, so. Um, hopefully, we can connect and maybe there decide to. Go forward if there's enough to work with. Or just continue to see what other towns are doing and what the state is is dealing with.
Okay.
I had one more too, and it had to do with enforcement, but I wasn't sure if Bob was coming tonight or not.
Oh, yeah, did he seem able to join us? No.
Because there is in other towns, you know, we talked about enforcement a couple. Meetings ago, or maybe it was last meeting and. You know, I don't want to punish anyone, I have nobody in mind when I was thinking about enforcement. I was just looking at different enforcement bylaws in different towns. And at our last discussion. We said there are violations where you charge money, but. A lot of the times the town doesn't take them to court, so, you know, it's kind of a moot point. But a lot of these other towns had. A statement also that said after such notice and order, if such violation continues. Or if any owner, I just have to open it further so I can see it. Or if any owner, agent, or occupant fails to obey any lawful order of the building inspector. With respect to any violation. Or used contrary to the pro- provisions of these zoning bylaws. The building inspector may revoke any permit issued for the occupation of the premises, so it's kind of like. If if you, a lot of them said, if you, like, say we have a special permit with conditions. And the owner isn't following the conditions, like, all right, you know, we don't have to follow those, we're not going to do it. This says that you can revoke the permit. So I wanted to run that by you guys, I could send it out in an email. And I also was going to run it by Bob tonight if he was here, because I saw it in quite a couple towns, and it's worded. Exactly the same in all the towns, and they go through the penalty by, you know. Fifty, hundred, three hundred. And then they add if the violation continues. Then the billing inspector can revoke the permit. So, and I really, I have no. No applicant or anybody in mind. I just, I just wanted to put it out there. My computer's dying now, so I gotta plug it in.
All right, do you want to send that then, or send it?
I'll send that to everybody.
Okay.
And maybe Bob or Kathy can look at it. So those were the only two I was thinking about talking at the next meeting. The enforcement and the special permit insight plan criterion conditions.
Okay, Anthony, anything from you, any updates?
No, I'm still, I I haven't put signs to bed yet, um, but I'll make that decision or at least present what I have by next meeting.
Okay. All right, so for me, I went back to look at, um, use variances. From the decisions online and. Kathy, I think I sent you a note that I I only found three from the. Twenty eighteen and beyond, it looked like otherwise, most of the variances are. As we saw, you know, trending in the last report, which was. Mostly set related to signs, setbacks, mostly dimensional overall. Because an accessory use or two, um, thrown in, but otherwise, or no, not accessory use. Was it the, I wonder if it was the use or the size, now I can't remember. It must have been the size, I didn't flag it as. I don't remember.
For an accessory dwelling, Carrie, I forgot what was.
For use variances granted, or variances granted, actually.
Oh, actually, you know what, I think, yeah, I think there was one on King's Street. Is that the one you were talking about where? Yeah, they they added, um, I I think that one was a combination of, they added to the house for the. Family that was living there, then plus they were going to do an ADU for, you know, one of the in-laws. I I think that was the one.
Okay, um, so hold on, let me see if I can tell you what the exact ones were that I pulled. I'm not sure if I can. Let's see. Hold on. Okay, here we go. So the use variances that I found in the decision since twenty eighteen was the use variance. On, uh, milk porridge for massage therapy. There was a experience for a CrossFit gym, which I don't think actually happened on, um, Barefoot Road. And then obviously, the one we just saw, the experience for the warehouse space on One Lyman. So those are the three. So not, not a lot, I, and Kathy, I don't know if you had more other ones that, or if there's like a updated spreadsheet. Available in works, no.
And no.
So. Anyway, in terms of how we want to handle that, um, we talked about. Look, taking a look at what other, how, what's the history of use variances. Um, and then if we wanted to proceed, then we would obviously. Talk to the ZBA about that, but that was just the first, that was my homework assignment on that one. Any, any other, Kathy, anything from you from last time?
Um, no, 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 nothing. Earth shattering, uh, the, the, um, the developer for Ridge Road. Um, did send over some very. Rough, you know, language and, um, wants to, you know, um, review it like with Bob and I. First to see that if it even makes sense, so we haven't even, I haven't even read it myself. So we're going to try to do that within the next week or two. Um, and then, um, and then hopefully he'll, you know, he'll, his intention is then he would come back. Um, you know, to whenever your next couple of meetings, I know, Carrie, as far as. November, well, we can talk about that after this discussion, but just your meeting schedule.
Oh, so nothing on home occupation, that's still TBD?
Correct.
Okay, and you said outdoor seating is not anything we have to worry about, it's already taken care of.
Correct, yep.
Okay, so there's no other staff updates, or there may be staff updates?
Uh, no, I don't, I I again, I, you know, I just have some flags in my, in my, um, you know, zoning bylaw that I just need to. You know, put into language, but it's nothing earth shattering.
Okay, so how does the board want to approach? You know, we do, we have a couple of updates since the last time, we need to, let's work backwards, so we need. February, we need to have our bylaws ready for the warrant.
Yeah, we should be, we we don't have the schedule yet, I mean, it's, I wish I had kept last year's, because I mean, it really doesn't change. You know, the 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 dates change, but I mean, pretty much it's the same, you know, month to month. Um, so, yeah, I think it's usually the beginning of February. That, um, that the town administrator. Wants the, you know, uh, draft articles from. Well, a little bit more than a draft shape, but wants them from the boards and departments.
Okay. And I think we, after that, we can still run our public hearings after that submission.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, so looking at the beginning of February, what do we want to accomplish within our next few meetings, do we want to? You know, next time around, we're going to have to go through and figure out what we move forward with to solidify, I think we're, we have some outstanding information on a couple of them still. We have some that we withdrew last time. So I think it's just settling on these, this last. What we have, um. On the table right now, which we can. If the board wants to talk about it now, we certainly can, but I'm just wondering if we don't have many updates, is that worthwhile, maybe? Not.
I think we should just wait. With our list.
Okay. Okay, so. Are there any? In thinking about the bylaws that we have, are there any? That we think, or Kathy, if you think as well. If we need any, like in the past, we've asked CMR PC to help with certain information, or is there anything that we have on our list that? We're looking for? Any additional information from outside sources, or we feel like we can obtain with that, whatever information we need based on our current bylaw? Proposals.
I was thinking maybe with warehouses, depending on how far we're going to go. Like, can we have an hour or two, like, very specific meeting with them, because. You know, I got the definitions from Sutton. But maybe there are other questions we have for them. I'd have to think off the top of my head, but I know they're very helpful with solar and hazardous, and they really, they ran that. Warehouse and distribution panel, and I guess maybe that's more of a question for after. The walkthrough, I I don't plan on saying much next week if I do the walkthrough, but I'll listen to see. You know, what is said.
Okay, that's a good suggestion.
I think you should contact CMR PC with regards to sober houses.
That's exactly what I was gonna ask, thank you, Michelle.
Rely them, they know the state, and they're going to guide you on that, and if they say you should be waiting, then you should wait.
Yep, I think that's great.
Okay.
If I can, Carrie, if I can just back up a second, when. Um, Amy, when you were talking about the, um. Definitions and so forth and and, um. You know, talking with Central Mass about that, that's. I'm just looking at what what category we put that in, we, did we, was that, that was talking about the commercial. Development overlay district or?
Well, we had thrown out a lot about warehouses, everything from moratorium to rewriting the definitions.
Right.
Maybe there has to be more criteria or conditions added to our. You know, special permits that have to do with traffic, that's what I'm finding in some towns.
Well, and that's actually, that's, that's separate from, from. Um, you know, what 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 need, what may or may not need to be. Um, added or refined for the decisions, like that, that's, you know. We can do that with Central Mass if you want, but that's not really, that's not for town meeting. You know, that's not really a bylaw discussion. Because that that's, that's what the board is voting on, you know, for what to put into decisions. So I would, I was thinking more, are you talking about looking at? Putting in different definitions, like updating the definitions?
Yeah, I mean, the reason why I just brought up. CMR PC, or when Carrie brought that up, is like. Maybe they have more ideas, if we're, we decide how we're going to go forward, and we're going to go forward with the moratorium. Going to go forward with definitions. I really think we have to decide by next meeting what we're going to do. Because they did work with Sutton and the other towns when they, um, worked on their bylaws. But actually.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, and it might just be a quick. Question, I could maybe even ask the, um, planner from Sutton. I'm trying to think back now, what they really changed in their def- in their bylaw was the definitions.
Or I wonder if they even have a report on hand coming out of their regional meeting, where they brought all those, you know, constituents together on that panel. May, and I I think. Part of this, um, project that they're working on Northboro with was to set in their mind best practices for other towns, so I think they were using this project as a way to. Formulate that a little bit, so if they've already started to make some formulations, maybe it's as simple as just. Finding out where they stand, like, based on what they're seeing here and the towns around us, it may not be a heavy lift at all.
Right. And at what point, and I'm not saying this is what I want to do, I'm just thinking in my head, like. At what point? Would the town say, okay, we have FedEx, Amazon, A Dewey pile, that's a lot of uses with traffic on one street. Maybe with the industrial land that's left, we should think of. What else would be good for our town, what is our town looking for? What other industrial uses there are? And I'm not saying that's what you do, I mean, that would be something I was thinking of asking CMR PC, like. Is there a point when a road hits too many, you know, too much? Because I know with everything in town, whether it was a self-storage containers. Our town said, okay, we have so many self-storage unit and, um, buildings, enough is enough, like. And I'm not saying we're at enough is enough, but at what point is enough is enough, I don't, I don't know. I'm just wondering if central mass planning may have an idea. Or is it? You know, I look at Iron Mountain and they're thirty five million dollars, I think they were assessed at or more, so. You know, I look at Iron Mountain and there are thirty-five million dollars, I think they were assessed at or more, so. What about bringing in something else like that, you know, are they less traffic, but more revenue? I'm not trying to, I don't, I don't. Just trying to think of high-revenue projects. That Northborough could try to. Entice to come to their town. You know, if you have three in a row. At what point do you say, well, now maybe we should try for something different? And it's not a bad thing, I don't think. Like, every town looks at their town and says. You know, how many? How many of these do we want, how many of that, like, how many, I'm just using like breweries, we don't even have any, but how many breweries do you want in your town, and how many? Different uses, cause I don't think any town is all one use. You, you like to have a mix of all different. Facilities that bring in all different revenue, I'm sure we want the highest possible revenue. For what little industrial land we have left, if we have three hundred acres and only two hundred of them are developable. You'd wanna use those for high-revenue uses that. Are beneficial to our town. We're almost at buildout, so I I just think as a planners. Or or planning board, you just think.
Amy, how do, why do you think that's not a high-revenue use?
Well, you can look at the assessors.
Way they're taxed, I don't think you have the right information.
Well, I heard that they're not taxed on the trucks because they're not parked there, so how else are they taxed?
Well, maybe that's a good question, you can ask the town administrator, and they can help educate the board on that.
Well, yeah, or we could ask someone like CMR PC, like, each town does something different, like Shrewsbury.
But wouldn't your town administrator have the accurate information coming from your tax assessor's office?
I'm thinking of different ways we can tax our town, like, Shrewsbury did something different than Northborough did, every town does something different, you can learn from other towns too. Shrewsbury actually has a ten cents tax on every Uber drive that initiates in Shrewsbury. I don't know how they did it, but I just read that in the community advocate. Like, there are different ways to get revenue.
Okay, so to whatever extent we could leverage, I don't know, Kathy, what makes sense to just see, like, what, if there's any sort of advisory. Um, opportunity with, or just some sort of, either knowledge, some sort of knowledge sharing, whether it's documentation, or. Maybe we could book some time with them if they're, if available. Do you think something like that's possible?
Well, I was, I I was trying to 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 narrow this down just for myself. As far as what, what to ask Central Mass about, and. I'm not, I'm not doing a very good job of it, because all I've got is. From the conversation is about, you know, do, do we need to update some of our industrial definitions? What, what I think you probably, you know, should do, well, I, what I would advise is you need to take a look at the map first. You know, to, you you've asked for, um, uh, you know, a, a look at what, what's vacant in town, so. You know, I think you need to take a look at that first, and then, and then maybe more questions will flow from that. Um, Carrie, but um, I mean, I can certainly, you know, talk to Trish and, uh, you know, Trish settles it. Central Mass and um. You know, and 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 maybe, you know, obviously she'll talk to other staff members, but just to see if some. Kind of, uh, you know, are they doing any information gathering now about, you know, updated industrial development or? Right, I mean.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Pretty broad, but I mean, that's, that's where we're.
Even get it kicked off, and then Amy, you're, if you attend the walk and just be a fly on the wall, and maybe something. Sticks out from that, and then we'll, we'll look at the maps, and we'll just start to pull those pieces together.
Right, yeah.
But it does sound like sober homes was something that we, I I don't know if there's an opportunity to check in with CMR PC on anything they know about sober homes, or.
Yeah, I'll ask them.
Um, I have one more question, and I don't know if it's a CMR PC uh subject matter or not, but. Um, would they have any advice or input about how a town might go? Uh, looking at finding parking or developing parking in a downtown area, or do we wait till the downtown? Committee and all that.
Um. I, sure, I I think, I think they could be helpful with that, but I think that might be a little premature, Millie. Because I think what we need to look at again is, you know, do we wanna change any uses, do we wanna change density in the downtown? And then, um. You know, then, then there's extremes, like, the, the city of North Hampton recently took parking out of their zoning. And they're like, you know what, if, 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 you know, you're the business, you figure out what it is that, you know, whether you're doing. Um, uh, you know, whether it's all, you know, walk-in customer, I mean, it's a different environment out there, I mean, it's a very walkable. You know, it's a big downtown, but, um, but they're no longer requiring specific parking for, for uses in their downtown. Um, so it's, it's a matter of the businesses figuring out what it is that they think that they need to survive. And then how are they gonna provide that, um, now that's, that's, you know. An extreme, um, but there are other communities doing that also, I know of in, in, in the country, not, you know, not just New England, but. That, that's just an example that comes to mind, North Hampton recently did it.
Yeah, I, but I also know they have a big parking garage.
Downtown.
They do.
Um, so, but, you know, that, to me, that should all be part of that downtown discussion.
Okay.
Um, you know, is that, and a lot of times parking is always, you know, there's always a discussion about parking, about whether it's a perceived problem. Or a real problem, and um, and, you know, when you, you end up, you know, part of that will be looking at. How many spaces are available in the, in the downtown, or whatever area you're talking about, but, but there's steps that we can certainly, you know. Could do for that.
I think it's just worth starting a conversation somewhere.
Okay. Anything else on that? No. Alright, so next plan. Next planning board meetings, we have, no, so we're not meeting on the second, we meet, our next one's November sixteenth, Kathy, did you have something related to schedule you wanted to discuss?
Um, well, I just wanted to verify that with everybody. On November sixteen, and then I also wanted to let um everybody know that I am going to be out most of November. Um, I have to have some surgery done at the beginning of the month. Um, so I, I won't be at your meeting on the sixteenth, but, you know, and then I'll be back, you know, in, in, you know, by the end of the month. Um, and then your December schedule, if you wanna think, it's not really that far ahead. Um, but I just noted December seventh, because then I think your other meetings, like the week of Christmas. Yeah, it would be the twenty-first.
Okay.
If you, if you wanted to still keep that on the schedule, or.
I mean, unless we're really stuck, I can't, I don't think anybody would wanna do that, do you guys wanna do that?
No, hard pass. Okay, we should be able to hammer these out, and.
Maybe work case, we, we do, we say December seventh is maybe we're here till midnight, but it's our only one of the month.
Right?
Oh, go ahead, Amy.
Oh, sorry, I said if we needed to, we could always do one, like, maybe the next week versus the twenty-first. And I don't wanna push you, Kathy, because it sounds like you have a lot, but do you think the maps would be ready for, like, mid-November?
The, I actually have um an appointment, we, we specifically set up a time. Um, myself and the um, uh, you know, IT director, he's, he's, he does our maps too. Um, well, I think it's either like next Monday or Tuesday, and um, and I told him that I'm, there might be an assignment coming out of tonight, so. That's part of what we're gonna talk about, and then I'll be able to find out from him then, um, you know, based on his schedule. Um, you know, if he'll have that for your November meeting, or would it be for the December meeting, but I'll find that out.
And then I think we're supposed to do a follow-up with um town council from some open items, and from executive session, do we? Need to do, I thought it was by October, but I don't know if it's.
Um, I just talked to him really briefly today, Carrie, and he said that, um, at, at some point in the near future. But he didn't have a date yet that he, that he did wanna have in executive session with you. Um, so whether it ends up being that in November or, or the beginning of December, but, uh, you know, I'll keep you all posted on that. So, we just had a quick call today about one thing that he, he just needed some follow-up information. And then said, you know, I know that I'm gonna need to schedule that executive session.
Okay.
Um, the only other thing, just real quickly, I just wanted to, you know, mention the ZBA applications. Um, if you wanna.
Sure.
You know, uh, again, uh, two hundred Bartlett Street, you know, you all know that one, um, so that was continued to the, um, October twenty-sixth ZBA meeting. Um, we have another application that came in, but we think. Um, there's a little communication problem, but we think that they're not going to go forward, which was the nail salon or Nail Academy. At three hundred West Main Street, um, it's still on the agenda, but that's, that may be coming off. And then, um, forty and forty-four Lawrence Street is a. I think it's a special permit, I didn't bring in my ZBA folder, um, but that is an A and R, um, if you remember. That created, there was an existing house, um, and then a garage or something, and so two lots were created. And now the developer or the applicant is asking, um, per the bylaw to extend the, the use beyond the groundwater line. By fifty feet, and that's something that's in the bylaw that's allowable, um, but they have to apply for a special permit, so that's what I think it is, it's a, it's a special permit. Um, that they're applying for, so those.
Use they're gonna do?
Oh, residential.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, so there's an existing house on one of the lots, and then they created that, a, a second lot. And so they wanna put a house on that second lot. Um, but there, but however the house is situated, I guess they need to extend, because of where the groundwater district is. Um, they need to extend, or are gonna request to extend the use over the groundwater line. So I think it might be, excuse me, groundwater. One and two over there, but, um, and then, uh, the groundwater, who's on the groundwater committee? Anthony, is that you? You're meeting this week, aren't you?
Tomorrow.
Okay, so, so that's, that one's on, on the agenda, I know that.
And they're not on sewer, I'm assuming?
No, not on Lawrence Street, no, no, so they'd be putting in a new subject system, or they would have to put in a new subject system. That's it for my list.
Alright, so Kathy, we won't see you for all of November then.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I, you know, I, I, you always hope it's earlier than. You know, what they tell you your recovery period's gonna be, I'll, I'll learn more tomorrow, I'm going to the doctor.
Okay.
Um, but anyways, it, right now, he's telling me, you know, four weeks, so.
Okay.
Good luck, I hope it's quicker.
Thank you.
We'll solve all the bylaws while you're gone.
That would be great.
Okay, is there a motion or adjourn?
So much.
Second.
All in favor, Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Carrie's an I, have a great night, everyone.